Please sign me for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. To conclude, I am not Dave, so I will be City Council President Jody Roney, and I will be leading the meeting tonight. Lonnie, can we get a roll call of last year, please?
Conley?
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Roney?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Stupin?
Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I move to adopt the agenda as written. I will second.
I've got a motion from Conley and a second from Daniel. Can I get a roll call or any discussion? Okay. Can I get a roll call, please?
Conley?
Yep.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Roney?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of November 11, 2025?
I move to approve the minutes of November 11, 2025.
I will second.
I have a motion from Conley and a second from Daniel. Any discussion?
Just under warrants payable, the next little sentence, Alderman, said that the two biggest claims were to vortex. I think it should be Alderman, Ronnie.
Oh, I forgot to add in there.
Yeah, that's okay.
Sorry about that.
Anything else? Okay. Can I get a roll call, please?
Conley?
Yep.
Daniel?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, marriage business is relatively short, like I say, because Mary-Dave is not here.
Get up early.
And he just said he'd like to remind everybody to forward any comments, correspondence regarding the grant projects or anything else that you feel needs to be part of the public record to Lonnie if she hasn't already, if she wasn't already included, so that it can be included in the packet for next time. Number two reminder that the judge will be here on 12/9, this is where everybody ends. You should have received notice of completion of canvassing by then if you or if you haven't already. Lonnie will be reaching out to confirm what folks would like the language to be in the swearing-in. There are only two options up for decision, no free-for-all edits. And then, just a short recap of the meeting for the Pilot Tourism Grant Program that was applied for by the Red Lodge Community Foundation. They had that last Wednesday, I believe. The Steering Committee gave the attendees basically a 10,000-foot overview of the grant and the project. Each table, we were all set up in tables, and each table reviewed each project with pros, cons, and possible alternatives. This was the first meeting accepting public comments, and they are encouraging everyone to reach out via email to P as in Paul, C as in Charlie, T as in Tom, G as in George, P as in Paul, at r l a c f dot org with questions, concerns, comments, and ideas. There's also a survey to be completed regarding the grant project. Please take the survey. I did ask Lonnie, and city staff will be posting that email address and the survey link in the news section of the city website, so please go out there and take that. I did forward it to her, so let me know if you don't get it or if it's... But, let me see, I just want everyone to know that it's the very beginning of the process. Two of the projects will be going to the procedures that Land Use and Planning is currently working on for the process for, that they're creating for the use of city-owned land that Chelsea will be talking about later on today. These will also include most likely reviews by the Parks Board, the Land Use and Planning Committee, and finally, City Council. So, nothing is set in stone yet. Like I said, it's the very beginning of that process, but that's, it'll have to go through all of those steps that Land Use and Planning is currently working on. All city meetings for this are public, and agendas are posted on the city website under the meeting section, so everyone is encouraged to please attend via either Zoom or in person and participate. We do want your participation, so. Public tonight will be in two areas of the agenda. Next one is coming up right now, and everyone will have three minutes to comment, but council members are unable to respond during this period. It's strictly for you to come up and talk to us for three minutes about your comments, concerns, however. Any other things at the table before I open it up for public comment? Okay. I will now open it up for public comment. First, we'll take public comment from here in the room. If you'd please step up here to the podium and address your comments to me since I'm acting mayor tonight, and we would love to hear your three minutes of comments.
Is this due to the, or can we comment on the grants?
You can, yeah. It's anything, anything, because the grants are not on the agenda tonight, so you can absolutely come up and comment for three minutes.
I thought that the public comment at the end was for anything, and then the public comment now is for anything.
It just says "public comment."
He changed it.
No, it's in case.
Honestly, I think it's better anyhow.
So, please step up here. Yes, and just give your...
Not that podium.
Yes, this other podium.
There are podiums everywhere.
Is there a timer somewhere?
No, they'll be timing it. Just give your name and your address.
My name is Teresa Tafoya, and I live at 401 North Howser. I live right across the street from the park where they skate and the soccer field, and I, along with neighbors, are here, expressing a concern that we already have a really bad traffic problem on Howser. We have a lot of people up on 78 who are cutting through on Howser to go to the post office, to go to the grocery store, they won't go to the roundabout to, you know, Main Street. And so, if that were to be more commercialized with the park area there with ice skating rink, it would cause a lot more congestion, it would cause a lot more traffic, more than what it is as far as the commercialization of what is proposed to happen with the cement slab, which I think is a mistake, because a lot of people enjoy that green space more than people who, you know, skate. So, I think I'm totally opposed to it. But, also, I wanted to question, why not consider the fairgrounds, the rodeo stadium? I mean, there are many temporary, or companies that make temporary ice panels, so they could, they run tubing in these panels, and you can ice it over, and they're temporary. So, that whole rink, you know, they could make it as big as they want, there's already sound, there's already lights, there's already bathrooms, there's, you know, their outbuildings. If they needed to build another building, there's the land there to store, you know, the ice skating equipment. But, that's a great alternative, because then they could have it as big as they want if they want to do tournaments. It just seems, and that space sits empty all winter long. And if there were needing upgrades to that, part of this grant could be, you know, improving the fairground stadium for winter and for year-round. You know, I don't know if the stadium seating needs any repair, or if the bathrooms need any repair, or, you know, that would, it would help both, I mean, it would benefit both, you know, the ice skating and the fairgrounds itself. So, that's my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next.
Let me start by saying, I do like the ice rink. I've skated there, it's been 60 years. I'm Marv Keller. I also live on Howser Avenue, and I am the Red Lodge representative on the Carbon County Historic Preservation Commission, and I do have a concern about putting a permanent structure there. And this is a letter that we have prepared along Becky and I, who is the Historic Preservation Officer for Carbon County. Our Historic Preservation Commission members have discussed the proposed project, a Red Lodge Ice Rink located on Lyons Park. The historic public park is adjacent to the High Bug Historic District and the Red Lodge Commercial Historic District. And in discussing this project with Kate Hampton, who's the Community Preservation Coordinator in Helena with the Montana Historical Society, the park itself would be eligible as a historic property, and listing on the National Register of Historic Preservation. And we believe it deserves further consideration, the project deserves further consideration by the Carbon County Historic Preservation Office and the Preservation Commission of the potential damages that could occur before taking action. It's the position of the County Historic Preservation Commission that the historic integrity of Lyons Park would be damaged by the introduction of a large permanent structure, as such they proposed. And attached with our letter is a 1901 map that shows that, or as early as 1901, the area was identified as a park, as a historic park. And do we submit this now, is it here?
Come on, thank you.
And we just wanted to make sure that the history of the area is considered.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Seth Decker. I live at 601 South White, and I emailed you all my letter of concern tonight that I'm going to discuss here. It's the same thing. I'm just here to express my concern about the significant lack of communication and transparency regarding the recent announcement of the plans to pave or add concrete to Lyons Park. The community was caught off-guard by the news that surfaced during the week of November 17 about replacing that cherished space with a concrete slab with cooling coils to extend the hockey and skating season for Red Lodge Ice. I think a lot of it, too, has to do with the way that information was presented, that we found out about it through Red Lodge Ice instead of through the city of Red Lodge or other avenues. It's disheartening that community members were not adequately informed of the potential project beforehand, as it is essential for the city residents and taxpayers to have a say in initiatives that affect our shared spaces. I know it's not a requirement, but it should be a consideration. A recent survey, you know, I would be, based off of what everyone else is talking about, that if a new impact analysis has been done on the High Bug neighborhood to determine the impact to that area with additional space and events and things like that that are being monitored. A recent survey on social media showed sentiments that indicate a sizable portion of the community opposes the current plan, but there's a group that is for the plan, too, and I can see it from both sides. Many residents, though, that aren't on social media were blindsided by the announcements, primarily seeing details through Facebook, local news outlets like KTVQ and Q2 News. To many, the project appears to be rushed to secure grant funding with minimal public input, raising significant concerns about the transparency from the city. As Nate Davis stated on one of the Red Lodge posts with Red Lodge Ice, "The city conducted a study over two decades ago that identified the area as the best for such a drastic infrastructural change." I would argue a lot has changed in Red Lodge in two decades, and that alternate locations are available that better fit the narrative of the skating rink. I want to make it very clear, I'm not against the skating rink and what it represents to Red Lodge and the things that it provides. I'm against taking away the green space, the park area that's heavily used for many activities, the community needs that accommodate those areas primarily, you know, in the summer you see picnics down there, daycares, Special Olympics uses it for their practice to get into the Summer Games, and putting concrete over those areas would impact all of those other people. I feel it's the responsibility of the city council members to ensure that all voices in the community are heard. The secrecy surrounding this project motivated by the allure of free grant money is neglectful to those you all represent.
Can you finish it up? I'm sorry, that was your time.
Sure. And I can just leave it at that. You all have a copy of this, so I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Becky Van Horn. I am your Carbon County Historical Preservation Officer, but I am here in front of you today because you already have our thoughts for the Preservation Commission to read some notes that were asked to be passed on by people who are not in town at the moment to attend the meeting. And this one is from Linda McKenzie. "To the Red Lodge City Council, I am writing respectfully to ask the city to reconsider the proposal to concrete over Lyons Park. As a resident who lives just a couple houses down, I can't express enough how much this small stretch of green space means to me and to many others who enjoy it daily. Whenever I attend an event or simply sit on one of the benches, I'm struck by the park's quiet beauty, the soft rustle of the wind blowing leaves, the sound of birds overhead, the feel of the lush grass beneath my bare feet. There is something grounding, almost sacred, in that simple experience, and sometimes standing there, I think about how this soil was walked, once walked upon and called home by the Crow people, who named the town of Red Lodge after their red teepee. Their belief that the earth is our mother and that we are all responsible for caring for her is something I believe deeply as well. Replacing this living, breathing green space with concrete feels unnatural and out of step with the very character that makes Red Lodge special. Concrete is a symbol of city expansion and hardscape development, but Lyons Park represents the opposite: softness, life, simplicity, and the small-town charm that our community is known for. Deer graze in this park, birds pull worms from it, children roll around and play on it. Once this land is covered in concrete, that life will be suffocated, and the transformation will be permanent. We all know there is no going back to its natural beauty once such a conversion takes place. Part of Red Lodge's appeal, what draws visitors and keeps residents rooted here, is the Norman-Rockwell-like charm, its authenticity, its simplicity, and its connection to nature. Concreting over Lyons Park would diminish that charm and shift our town towards something less personal, less natural, and less uniquely Red Lodge. I ask you to consider preserving this green and living space for future generations. Lyons Park is much more than a patch of grass. It is a reminder of our history, our values, and the simple beauty that makes this town feel like home. Linda McKenzie, neighbor and friend to Lyons Park, thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration."
Give that to Lonnie.
I don't have that.
This is the next one from Don Kinney. He says, "Red Lodge City Council, I believe there are freezing systems that will not need a huge concrete slab like real ice or a similar system. Keep the rink there, but no concrete."
Go ahead and give that. If you want to read them.
"To the Red Lodge City Council, this is from Zachary Clardy. There are other places that could use the money more. I don't know if the money is allowed to be used anywhere else, but a good way to do this..."
I'll read that one and the next one. Okay. All right. I'll read that to the next one. Okay. Thank you. We do have two public comments, so you can come back up. Next.
Becky Larson, 415 North Howser. Never done this before, so I don't exactly know what I'm doing, but I do have a lot of concerns that have been rolling through my head. I do have concerns with the Steering Committee that was brought together for this, and the transparency of who was involved, because no one in that neighborhood is involved in that at all, and a few other people who are involved in it that I feel like is a conflict of interest. That is a big concern of mine. Another big concern is that we have not been told when this grant is supposed to be finished up, so we don't know the expiration date on it, and with that, we don't know the amount of this grant, which is very concerning for all of us. And the biggest thing for me is, I have lived there for 25 years. It is a big piece of why I moved there in the first place. It is a green space. It is the biggest green space that we have in the middle of town, and I don't want to see that go away. And it hurts, it hurts me that those of us that live in this community were not given the opportunity to talk about this before it even came up, that it was just thrown at us literally a week before they decided to have a meeting on it from the foundation, and that is very hurtful. We have lived there for a long time, we care, we get concerned about the children there, the dogs that run back and forth, unfortunately, and the people that like to play on it, not just during the ice time. Please don't get me wrong, I love the ice skating rink. It's one of the reasons I enjoy that neighborhood, but I don't want a parking lot in front of my house, which is exactly what it's going to look like. For three months out of the year, it's an ice skating rink. For approximately three months out of the year, every Friday, or Saturday, it's a farmer's market. Other than that, it's a playing field for kids, it's an open space for those who want to go have coffee in the morning and sit on a blanket in the grass. It is, it is for children, it is for adults, and it's for the animals. I don't know how many times I see animals running around over there, and you're taking that away. You're sterilizing our city, and Red Lodge should not be sterilized, and that's what's happening here. This is a big piece of property that should be green and beautiful and open, and it's going to become a parking lot in the middle of town, and that makes me extremely sad. So, I feel like there's a need for more transparency. I feel there's a need for more people that are part of that actual community to be on the Steering Committee or to be a part of that Steering Committee when it happens, and I feel we need to have more say in it. This was shocking and hurtful, and literally keeps me awake at night. So, thank you.
Next. Anyone else in the room that wants to talk right now?
Come on, Becky. The meeting's over.
I am Rebecca Hardie, 405 North Howser. I am directly across the street from the ice skating rink. I like ice skating, I love having the rink there, but my husband, Don, and I are completely opposed to the building of this more advanced space. I really agree with what the Historical Society said, with Becky Van Horn said the other day, "Once green space disappears from our neighborhood, it never comes back." So, what, if this happens, what happens in 20 years from now? If it gets cracks in it, and nobody wants to use it anymore, and it doesn't work anymore, then they just abandon it? Who takes care of it then? Then we're stuck with just looking at concrete. We have a lot of stress with parking on the street for people who have to park on the street, and then when the berms, you know, the snow berms start filling in from the curbs, there's less and less parking, and it becomes a really stressful sort of situation on our street. For those of us who have really small yards, it feels like a dirty trick to take away this big, beautiful green space that we all have been accustomed to having. And we'd love to see the skating rink used day and night. It's really fun when the skaters turn on the lights and use it at night and stuff, but so do the soccer players, and so do a lot of other people, a lot of sports and kids and people that, we don't know who they are, but they just love using that park, and I think it's fantastic. Those of us who live right along the park often have people knock on our door, and they say, "We want to use the park for something, but the city requires us to get your signature, so can you please sign this that says that we can use the park?" We certainly would have appreciated something like that when we found out that you guys were, or that somebody is planning on making radical, permanent changes to the park across the street. Anything else? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes? Mr. Smith?
That's the fat in the front. What didn't we think of that?
Steve Smith, 517 North Howser. I think that the changes that this more permanent rink will bring our, will change the nature of our little neighborhood. I think that the way it's set up now with the three months or so of ice is sufficient for the hockey fans and the ice skating, ice skaters, that's fine. With this new proposal and the new in-ground refrigeration capabilities, it's going to be a much longer season, it's going to be more of a disruption, disruption might be too strong, but more of a change to our neighborhood than we currently have, because most of us currently think it's nice, like having the skating facility there, and it's used, it's used for hockey. With this new, more permanent installation, more season, more long, the length in the season of ice with the in-ground refrigeration can be more of an impact to us local residents, and I think there'll be more use, there'll be more people. North Howser is going to be a much busier place, much more, a noisier place for longer periods of time. There are other places in the community where a rink would be, a more permanent rink would be better. Lyons Park is not the place to put this, I don't think, for us local residents. Thank you.
Anyone else in the room that would like to comment?
Can I add something?
You can add the next one.
I'm waiting just for somebody that couldn't be your type.
Right over here, Tom, please. And just state your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name's Deborah Schefner, and I'm from Red Lodge, or someplace else. So, this is from Melissa Cross. She says, "Although I no longer reside in Red Lodge, my family does, and I like to visit often. I moved to a larger city in Montana to raise my kiddo so that she had more choices and opportunities for extracurricular and school activities, as well as a more diverse community to grow up in. This ice rink is exactly the type of infrastructure that a town strives to provide for its children's families and to all residents. The location, however, seems to be not well thought out. I'm sure there is another space, possibly around the civic center and post office, that would be better suited. The proposed space is currently home to an ice park, a lovely green space, place to host farmer's markets, festivals, gatherings of all types, and able to be used year-round. If pavement or concrete is what you're looking for, surely a less currently natural setting could be found. In the town I moved to, my family actually makes use of the ice rink space on a regular basis in the winter. In the summer, it sits, it sits empty except for livestock shows during the fair. At all events, markets, lessons, and games, there is a serious shortage of parking. Please keep this and the surrounding neighborhood in mind. I encourage your community to keep working on this project and find it a happy home with lots of parking and preferably no loss of current green space. Melissa Cross, Missoula, Montana."
Thank you.
And I'll just, on my own, if I have another second, I do. Oh, okay, well, then I won't take that long. Just as a property owner and business owner, I would say that one of the things that my customers, because I own a Bed and Breakfast, come to Red Lodge is because of its quaintness, right? So, people come here and they love the small town, they love how it looks. They can go anyplace and see concrete in big cities and activities and so forth, but when you come to Red Lodge, it's a special spot, and probably all of us are here because of exactly that reason. You know, I mean, there's plenty of, I also live in South Florida. I kind of hate to go back there, but I do. It's such a different environment, and when you come here and you feel that hominess and you feel the charm of this little town, there's like nothing like it, right? And people are like, "Oh, we're going to go to Cody," and I'm like, "Oh." Cody's nice, but when you drive down Cody's Main Street, do you feel like Red Lodge? You know, it's wide, it's, you know, all the historic buildings, except for what? You know, the Irma, maybe a couple other places, they're gone, and you drive down Red Lodge, and you're like, "This place is exactly the way that it was," right? And I just think that it's really important, not just for the park, but for overall, that we keep that in mind, you know, when we're developing this town, that we don't, we don't let that go. That little thing with verbiage.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
Orna Babbie, 602 North Howser. Totally unprepared for this. Until earlier this year, I was working in billings, and so I wasn't able to spend as much time in Red Lodge as I would have liked, but now I'm looking forward to pretty much spending full-time here. We love it here. One of the things that really kind of depresses me about billings is the lack of green space downtown. It just wasn't well-planned downtown, and it's so hard to get it. It's not there from the beginning. We have it here and the idea of losing something so special in this wonderful town is heartbreaking to me. I, and this is my fault. I didn't know about the last public meeting or the Wednesday meeting. I didn't learn about it until Thursday on Red Lodge Buzz. I had no idea. I would have been here. I would have made it a priority to be here and be prepared and make a better statement. But this is really shocking to me and very sad. And I hope there's more time for not just our little community on Hauser, but the whole town. I mean, this is the whole town, not just our neighborhood. And I really hope we don't make a rash decision that's going to change the character of this fabulous place we all love. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room that would like to speak? I think we've just about got everyone. Anyone else that hasn't spoken that would like to? Don't be shy. Anyone online that would like to speak? Angie? Go ahead.
Hello. I think it's great to have.
Your address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, my name is Angie Hazel Swer. I live on Hagan Street, South Hagan. I think having an ice skating rink in town is an asset. I'm not crazy about the idea of paving the park, concrete. I haven't heard any fiscal thoughts on this. It sounds like they're getting a grant to build it. But to keep ice cool sounds like a pretty expensive, long-term project to me. And I wonder how that's going to be paid for. That's mainly all I had to say. That somebody else hasn't already said. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Sam, do you have a comment? Just say your name and address, please.
I'm Samantha Thomas. I live at 310 North Platt in Red Lodge, Montana. So I'm just going to start off with a question. Are we just discussing the skating rink or are we, this is comments about the weather, about anything?
This is, this is public comments on anything you want to talk about.
Okay, okay. We won't talk about the weather, we know about that. All right, so I have five minutes. So I, okay. I'm very disturbed and worried about the Coal Miners Park addition expansion. I don't think it's necessary that we light that area all night long. I am all about the sledding hill. I'm all about Nordic skiing. I don't think we need to make snow. I'm all about people enjoying the trails. I'm all about kids enjoying the sledding hill. I would love to see bathrooms there. I don't think we need to light it 24 hours a day. The only thing that that's going to do is attract a different crowd at 2 o'clock in the morning. I don't think that's a good idea. I think that the people that use that facility, use that park in the night, in the dark hours, use headlamps. I know when I walk my dog, I use a flashlight. I don't want to be, I don't want to come upon a person that might not be the safest person at 5:30 in the morning because they've been there all night long doing what some people might do all night long in a park. And then, of course, I'm concerned, I'm concerned about the animals and their welfare and them having their quiet time. They're accustomed to noise during the day. They are not accustomed to noise all night long. It's not fair. We were gifted that area because it was on a dump and it was unusable. And now everybody wants to put stuff in Coal Miners Park. I'm all about growth. I'm all about enhancing Red Lodge. But I don't think we need to turn it into Cody, turn it into Jackson Hole, turn it into Vail, turn it into Snowmass. Slow and steady growth, I think, is the way to go. And I think it's silly to put a big slab of concrete in Lions Park. I'm sorry. There have got to be other ways. I loved the comment about using the rodeo grounds because then that facility could be used year-round. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. And I appreciate everybody on the council. Thank you, I know it's hard work.
Any, anyone else online that would make a, like to make a comment? Go ahead and take yourself off mute or turn your camera on. Anyone? Did I miss anyone?
We are. Nope.
Nope, okay. All right. Going once, twice, three times, anyone else? Okay. That ends our public comment period. Thank you all for your participation. We will have another opportunity at the end of, towards the end of the meeting for more public comments. If you would like to stick around, you are more than welcome to speak twice if you want, as long as it's something new. Or adding to the comments today. Yeah, I mean, don't repeat what you just already said.
And we don't get to say anything, right?
No, 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 you do not. So.
Very difficult for me.
Okay, so let's move on to our action items. Can I get a motion for resolution number 3725?
I move to approve resolution number 3725, a resolution of the City of Red Lodge to adopt a detailed preliminary report, engineering report for the stormwater system prepared by Great West Engineering, Inc.
And I will second.
I've got a motion from Conley and a second from Daniels. Sinta or Ann, do you want to explain this or do you want me to? It's from Public Works, so.
I can't explain it.
It's just a preliminary report that needs to be done before they can do any stormwater or anything, right? They're just kind of going over.
Yeah, it's for our, we had it up for discussion last time. It's a preliminary engineering report for the stormwater system that was prepared by Great West Engineering. They presented it at our last meeting.
Right.
It's one of the steps that's required to get funding. You have to put that, do the report to get the funding.
Yeah, to identify issues concerning.
The projects that are needed.
The detail of the project.
It was the detailed report that they did last meeting.
Yes, that he, yeah, for 45 minutes. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions or discussion on this? Can I get a roll call, please? Conley?
Yeah.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis? Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
All right. Can I please get a motion to cancel the December 23 meeting?
I think a motion to cancel the December 23 council meeting.
I'll second that. I have a motion from Stupin and a second from.
Rude.
We've been taken care of.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
Can I get a roll call, please? Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to extend the city attorney contract?
I move to extend the city attorney contract. I don't have any other paperwork except I have a recital.
For three months.
Oh, for three months, okay.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Conley and a second from Daniels to extend the city attorney contract for another three months. What? Discussion?
It looks like it's exactly the same as it was the last time.
It was.
Except it's extended to February 28.
With the plan, then, to open it up to hire?
Well, um.
The mayor's still waiting on word from the league of cities and towns on that whole process.
So, yeah, he does not have that information yet, so he cannot open it up yet.
Will three months be sufficient or should we extend for?
Well, we can't. The paperwork shows in the paperwork.
Three months at a time, that gives us a little bit of other options.
Yeah, we don't want to extend it for a year and then be stuck.
Right.
Well, I was thinking like.
Sorry, Dennison, if you're listening.
The mayor's not here. We can do whatever we want.
Okay, so any more discussion or questions?
No.
Roll call, please. Conley?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yeah.
Davis?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Rude?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
Okay. And that ends our business part of our city council meeting. We will now open it up into the council work session. First up is our Public Health and Safety Commission.
Which is me.
Alderman Conley.
We discussed at length an MOU for a school resource officer. There was lots of details that was discussed and.
We have a copy of it in our packet. Yes, there is a copy of it in our packet.
Oh, that's where I found it. The MOU was written by Danae and it satisfies the grant. You'll notice, I'm going to go a little more detail, that it is a four-year commitment for a school resource officer, but they only fund it for three years. And the first year is heavy. So it's like $125,000, but $6,000 the first year. We did have Matt Heaton, President of the School Board, at the meeting this morning. And they are all for having a school resource officer. But they don't want to pay any more for a school resource officer than they're paying a first-year teacher, which is $40,000. No wonder why our teachers can't afford to live here. Anyway.
I'm like, everyone needs more money.
So the school board has not yet met on this issue. They do have a copy of the MOU. And the meeting is next Wednesday, the 3rd. The work session for the school board, 6:00 PM at Middle School. And the chief will be joining us. Patty, you and I are going, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. One thing that I heard from Danae after this meeting was our current staffing for the police department is seven officers, same as we had in 1985. And obviously they're stretched a little thin. And this MOU and grant requires us to have eight. Requires eight officers. So.
Does a school resource officer count as one?
Yes.
Okay.
But, but the problem is going to be funding. Especially if the school's only willing to pay $40,000. And I believe that the city is the one who's going to foot the bill for the training because a school resource officer is not just a cop in the school. It, there's a lot of training that goes into that resource officer. So the policeman that's there does a lot more than policing. So we'll see what happens at this meeting next Wednesday. We did look at ordinance 844, which is tobacco use.
Is that, just one second. Will that be up for, the MOU, will that be up for?
Probably not.
Okay, so it'll still stay full of the bulk?
Yeah, let's wait and see. We have three months from the date that it was approved and I think that brought it to January 11th. There's not a lot of time, but enough time to get, we need the feedback from the school.
Because we're not going to have a meeting, another meeting in December.
Correct, so you guys may have to have a special meeting. Because if the MOU is not approved by that date, then the funding is gone.
Gone. It's gone.
What's our date?
January 11. We should have another meeting before then. So there's one in January, but the school board, I believe, meets once a month.
Once a month.
And there's one in January, it's actually after you guys cancel.
The school board meets, I believe they said, every other Wednesday. This is a work session. Oh, and then the following week, which would be the December 10th, would be the actual voting session. So we need to get through this work session next week and see where the school board is and somehow.
So our meeting will be on the 9th.
So we are meeting on the 9th, okay.
We're meeting on the 9th, but we're not meeting again until January 13th.
So we're very.
And we won't make the January 11th date unless we, we could.
Like I said, you guys will have to have a special meeting.
If in fact we can move ahead with this.
We just canceled the December.
In January. It's in January.
You're back to December 23rd.
I know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry for interrupt.
The chief has been, since he became the chief, has been trying to get an SRO. And this kind of seems to be our window. So you can look at the MOU that Danae wrote up. It is more involved than a lot of the other cities' MOUs because of the grant. The grant has requirements on what's in there. So, and it's very detailed.
So just to clarify, because there's an exhibit in there of what the local match is versus the federal share.
Correct.
And the first year, the grant will pay $62,000.
And $40,000 from the school makes it $102,000.
Okay. And then the next year it drops down to $40,000 from the grant. And then the third year it's $23,000.
So.
So it gradually goes down.
And we're required to do it for four years.
Yeah, the fourth year.
The fourth year we get nothing from the grant.
Oh, you have to pay the grant back?
No. You have to pay that year of the.
You have to agree to do four years.
Yeah, that's a part of the stipulation for the grant.
Right, but what happens the fourth year if you can't afford to pay the officer and the SRO? And like, you have to pay the grant back.
I mean, that's.
I mean, I guess I would want to know that before I approved it. Like if we have to refund all the grant money that we receive because we can't afford to do it the fourth year, I would want to know that.
I haven't seen the grant.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
That's $125,000.
And I did ask Matt, if a first-year teacher makes $40,000, what does the second-year teacher make? If they make more, then their share should go up as well, is my theory. The other discussion in the MOU is you see that the school board originally had asked us to have that officer there 75% of his time. So obviously they're willing to work on that figure because 75, right now they're literally paying 30% of an officer. So that's one of the things that they're going to discuss. And obviously the rest of the time that the officer's not in the school, it would add to our police force, at least for a little bit.
In the summer especially.
Well, they're also going to be there for all the school events, the, all of the after-school. So, any other questions on the MOU?
I'm just meeting on Wednesday, but the school board meeting, so they're discussing it.
Yeah, it's 6 o'clock at the middle school. And it's their work session, so we'll find out. Myself, Patty and the chief.
You can go.
I can go, Kathy.
Yes, that's only three.
You just can't.
No, you can still touch. Yeah, it's only three.
I can go as a parent.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
I think that's it on the MOU. We did work at, working on the tobacco use in public parks and recreational facilities. And I think that we've got a pretty good, well, I thought we did until Dennison hit it, so. So we were trying to do tobacco use and electronic cigarettes vaping in our public parks and recreational facilities. And whether or not the fines are included in the ordinance or whether they're a resolution. And there was this whole thing between Dave and Dennison that he felt that fees should be a resolution, but fines should be part of the ordinance. But then we know that a resolution only requires one city council meeting where an ordinance requires two. So I don't know where that came out. In Dennison's, in Dennison's draft of the ordinance, he included the fine in the ordinance. So we'll probably be showing you that next time. That's it for me.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions or comments for our Public Health and Safety? Admin and Finance, that is.
You.
Business registration ordinance, short-term rental ordinance. Chelsea, do you want to talk about it at all?
Yeah, so we've been working on the business, or ordinance 907, specific to our business registration for a while now. Specifically, there was two requests. One, we needed to update the language to reflect registrations versus licensing. It is also something that needed just clean up across the board for some clarification on temporary vendors. And then we also needed additional clarification for short-term rentals and how that process works at the city clerk staff level, making sure that it's getting, that there's, all the information that our city clerks have to do their job. So specifically, we've made it through ordinance 907 and we are now going to be removing the short-term rental process and that section of ordinance 907 and moving it into ordinance 963, which is specific to short-term rentals. So instead of having registrations plus STRs, which is silly. So instead of having registrations plus SDRs, which is silly, uh, SDRs are gonna have their own ordinance. Registrations are gonna have their own ordinance. And then any other businesses, like marijuana businesses, uh, food trucks, wha- what have you, like whatever it might be, they will have their own ordinances if there's additional protocols beyond what's already in the scope of the general business registration. And so we should have that here for discussion, uh, next week and then for a vote just after the first of the year.
Yep, but it's an ordinance, so it will be two-
Two.
Two.
Yep.
Public carings, two public carings and two votes.
Yes, it'll be two ordinance.
Yes, yes.
But we should have that ready for everyone to see and have that in the packet for the next go.
Yes, and the other thing that we will have, um, at our next meeting will be the, uh, short-term rental, um, presentation. Um, we will hopefully have that all ready to go. Um, just adding the new information from this last year to it and, um, adding it to the graph. So we will be doing that presentation next time. If you could add that to the agenda, please. And wherever you want to put it.
I guess that'd be an extra item.
Yeah. It's just an information item. It's not anything that has to be approved, it's just information. Okay? Uh, Public Wor-, oh, Land Use and Planning, I'm sorry, I was gonna skip you. Chelsea!
Please skip me.
I don't want to skip you.
So specifically, we did talk about the city, the pilot program grants, uh, as well as our flowchart and process for the use of city-owned land. So to kind of, for everyone in the room, um, to kind of clarify, I was misinformed, um, about what Wednesday's meeting, my expectation is very different. And I think across the board, again, as a lot of folks have said in this room, transparency and conversation, I feel that there is a group of folks that are working on this and a lot of times, they intermingle with other groups, but not necessarily clear pictures get presented. Um, I do think that that is something that, across the board, can be better. I do think that, I'm looking forward to going through some of the resources that the foundation has made available. But just to kind of put a status of where we're at with that project or where that project is at, I'm not even gonna say where we're at. Um, is specifically, the, they are in the process of making plans and starting the plan banks out. And they are currently, what the whole purpose of Wednesday was supposed to be was to forget feedback from the community, such as the neighbors, such as the business owners, to what they would like to see before they start to make the detailed plans. I was expecting detailed plans and a bigger concept, but it was more of the high-level vision, which, if that were the case, I just wish that there was more opportunity to actually provide. Again, I'm not gonna go down the rabbit hole, but one thing that leads us into our next conversation is, one, it is city-owned land, so they are gonna have to go through a process with the city, with parks, with city staff, um, to actually get the opportunity to modify, change, enhance however they want to do that. So as of now, the city has not approved any further action with it, though we are working closely with them, and closer and closer, I hope, um, to actually start to develop those plans and figure out what their next steps need to be to actually do anything, if anything. So just be assured that we're in the very infant stages of this process and nothing is set in stone, or concrete for that matter. Um, and this is now a great time to provide creative solutions as well as, um, again, being critical of it as well. So it's not, not a bad thing to do. But just, again, don't, don't think it's a personal attack. Um, and don't think that they are before the stage of actually introducing this to the public because there's not much to introduce, if that makes sense. So I think there was a lot of miscommunication on what say we can get there.
Yep.
Anyhow, but-
And I would like to say though, too, please, if you go to the Red Lodge Area Community Foundation's website, there are email addresses out there for every single person on the steering committee.
Yeah.
And there's also the email address that I gave you earlier today that they want, they really want you to use that group email address to send your comments to, because they're the ones right now that are meeting and that are coming up with ideas on how to proceed with this, so.
Yeah, we're, we're literally not involved with this program in any way at this point, besides the fact that we are helping provide direction the same way that the public is. So, and they want that direction, so please, provide that feedback and your solutions, your vision of what that space could be, should be, where it could be, all of that can go to them at this point, because, um, and I'm not saying don't send it out because it's good for us to hear.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, absolutely.
And honestly, this whole process, kind of leading into the next part of the conversation, has been really helpful, because one thing we are working on is what is the process for the use of city-owned land? What's that application look like? What do people need to be providing to the city for us to make an educated decision? As well as what do they need to be doing with the community, having those conversations with the public? Um, what do the public hearings need to look like? When do those need to take place? Again, this is also very infant stages as well. And it's something we've been working on for a couple months now, but when you really think about the timeline of when we're working on this, like, we're working hours at home, sure, but we get an hour every two weeks to talk about it. So this is a slow process. Um, and it's not something we're rushing, period. I'm not going to, whether people want me to or not.
And it is, it's a work in progress. Every, every meeting we go to, there's new feedback on what should be added, what really isn't, you know, applicable, you know, we can take things out, we can add things to it. Um, but obviously, getting feedback from the public has absolutely helped us, um, direct us on how an application process should look. Um, again, did you mention the survey that's out also?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
And so just, that is what we are working on right now. And please, public feedback is super appreciated. Um, I've been, again, just having the conversation today, one of the things that we have is, uh, within that application is all the different advisory committees that need to be able to review these applications. And I just added the Carving County Historic Society. That's something that should be included. Where, uh, again, each of these advisory committees, and it's a long list, it's not gonna be a quick process for them to get the okay to pave over in a sh, in the park. It's really-
Or, or put in any health or-
And exactly, plant a tree. It, literally, this process comes from the smallest of projects to the biggest scale legacy projects you can imagine. And so we really are trying to be extremely thorough and we want, we're trying to share this as well with other user groups and community members who are wanting to pursue some of these bigger projects, so they know what to expect when it comes back to us and things that we are going to want to see, whether we have this developed or not at this point.
Where is this survey from?
Uh, the survey is for the foundation and is on their website.
It's also gonna be posted on ours.
It is also gonna be posted on theirs.
It'll be posted on ours.
And it'll, yeah, Lonnie's gonna, city staff is gonna try to get it on our website with, in the news feed on the, on the homepage. You should be able to click there. And that email address for the grant, the tourism grant group is going to be on there, as well as that survey to please fill out. And it, it's a big survey and it's kind of open, I, I was looking at the questions, they're very open-ended questions about, you know, what, what parks do we have, you know, what, what do you want to see, what do you, you know?
Yeah, what's left.
It's a good, it's a good survey, so.
So, yeah, I, I just wanna encourage the, the public that we are really trying to develop this process where we're not making rash decisions. Um, and also, just wanna encourage folks that with the current projects that are being proposed, um, they're in the very infant stages. So we have a chance to nurture them and help them grow in a direction we want to see them. And whether that's, you know, something entirely different or if it's compromised, there's going to be, there's opportunities. That's, that's it, optimistic opportunities. Um, and if you are interested in the, the process that we're looking at and want to provide that feedback, because again, it is greatly appreciated. Um, we do have it in our last week's packet, which is online, the flowchart from what we're working on. And again, this is a living, breathing document, so it changes daily. Um, but it kind of gives you a general idea of what we're doing.
And that's on the city.
Yeah, if you go to the city council meetings, there's, um, you can look at the previous meetings packet and that would be in there. It's along with a bunch of other stuff, so fair warning, like, if you start digging in the packets, don't be discouraged, it'll be more of an eighty-page document.
It's either eighty pages. It, it hasn't been approved yet, that's why, you know, Chelsea said, this is what the Land Use and Planning is working on and they are tweaking it now.
Very rough, very rough.
And we just recently got one back to us with quite a few edits.
Yeah.
The teacher in me kind of cringes with all the red ink that is in here. But, um, again, it's growing.
It's growing, we're working on it.
Yep.
So we have direction for our next meeting to be able to have a letter of intent drafted. So, 'cause essentially, just to kind of recap and then I'll move on. Um, the letter of intent is where we really want people to start with the application process and that's going to be a vetting opportunity for the city to essentially provide direction of what they need to do to pursue an application. So is it a very small-scale project? Is it a large-scale project? Does it require city planning? Does it require going through different review committees and advisory committees?
Um, is there an MOU attached?
Is there an MOU? Is it going to affect neighbors? Is it go, what is that impact gonna be? And that's a massive part of this process that we're looking at, too, just so everyone knows.
Traffic.
Is community impact and finances.
So we'll give you letters of support, expected costs, those are-
Yeah, those are literally our number-one conversations all the time, yeah.
Yes, and.
I would like to encourage this group to go to the Land Use and Planning meeting. The next one will be on December eighth at four-thirty.
Okay.
You don't know how valuable it is to be there.
Yeah, it really is.
Where is it then?
Here.
And what time again?
December, Monday, December eighth at four-thirty, yep.
They're Mondays.
It's the Monday before the city council meeting, that's the regular scheduled meeting.
You have to, you have to, there's gotta be a face to this. And, um, another, some of your neighbors have been coming to public, uh, oh, my meeting's mixed up. Public health and safety, and I think that it's been valuable to have them there. And they've gotten some things done and I, I just, you have to get, you, you-
It's where the work happens.
It's where the work happens.
It's literally the discussion, it's where we're rarely changing thoughts.
Less than an hour, forty-five, fifty minutes. And you, you've, you've gotta make a commitment to these meetings if you want to have what you want.
Yep.
Have a voice in what happens.
It's, it's a really, we, again, it's highly encouraged. It's one of the work sessions happening, we have open discussions. So again, I know people get frustrated when they do public comment here and we can't have a con- conversation. We do those conversations within those other meetings. And there's one for each of these items on the agenda. And if there's anything that you see, like, we post these agendas ahead of time. If there's something you see coming up, come to our meetings, we love having those.
They're posted on Friday night?
Yep.
So at the, by the end of Friday, you have all the agendas for all of the standing committees and for the city council meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else from Land Use and Planning?
We have a lot, yeah, we're just working, we're bringing it, bringing it away.
All right, okay. Public Works, um, the Fifty-Fifty Sidewalk Program. Um, we reviewed that document, um, today in the meeting. Um, and it will hopefully be up for discussion at our next meeting. Um, I, we just made some edits to it. Um, and we will, um, Mike's gonna send it to Dennison for review, write up a resolution. So it will be, if you could add it to discussion for next time. Um, but basically, as we know, the city has set aside fifty thousand dollars in resort tax and we hope to do that every year. And, um, we have set, um, the city will match up to fifty percent of a project with a cap of ten thousand dollars. It's for, uh, residential, commercial sidewalks in, in the city limits of Red Lodge.
That need repair or-
That need repairs that are public right-of-way sidewalks. They will not repair your sidewalks going up into your house, you know, or your driveways. But, um, but it's a great opportu, we're hoping it's a great opportunity to fix some of the sidewalks around town, that people have not been, you know, that have been neglected and are in horrible repair. Um, so we're looking forward to that.
Hopefully, this works really well and we can increase the budget as we see the kind of-
Yeah, it'll, it'll be on a first-come, first-served basis and there'll be the steps-
July, what, July first?
July first, yeah. But it will, we have fifty thousand dollars in this year's budget, so people, as soon as we get it approved, people can start applying for it, um, for this year. Um, and hopefully be able to get the project done by June thirtieth. Um, if not, then you just have to get a written, um, extension from the Public Works Director saying why it didn't get done by June thirtieth. And then we'll re-budget for next year, for hopefully another fifty thousand.
Cool.
So that's where we're at on that. Um, any questions on that? Okay, all right. That ends our council business. Anything else council would like to talk about before I move on to public comment?
Well, we have correspondence.
Oh, that's, sorry, pu, correspondence, but anything else for, besides correspondence? Or do you have any correspondence? I'll, I'll do that.
Well, I know that we've got quite a few on the pilot grant. And I, I know that there's a lot of confusion on exactly what we're talking about. This pilot grant is one point two-five million dollars.
One point seven-five.
I thought it was one point two-five. Anyway.
It's two point, it's two point seven-five total.
Oh, okay. Over two years.
Yeah.
So it's a two-year grant to improve our off-season tourism. That's, that's the whole goal here. And I know that, um, I don't remember which committee meeting it was that they came to to tell us about this, first we heard of it as well, that they were aware of it and had some ideas on how to use that money, which we're open to do. Um, somebody talked about the rodeo grounds, which is privately owned, it's not city-owned property, so that's not gonna work.
Really?
Oh, it's county.
No, the rodeo grounds is privately owned.
By who?
The Rodeo Association. They gave all that land, including the airport, to the city, but they kept the rodeo grounds.
And would they, would they be open to-
It's not our, it's not our thing.
Okay, like, let's, let's keep the conversation at the table for you.
Anyway, so I, I, of all the correspondence we've got, there's so many errors in it. I'm concerned with people getting their information from Facebook. I know, I know, who knew?
Well, that's really the only place it's been given.
That's right, it is.
Well, except for these other websites.
Okay, let's keep it here at the table.
So, um, it was just like the emergency meeting of the Land Use and Planning. I don't know if you guys read that one. It was our regular scheduled meeting, but they called it an emergency meeting.
Everyone's an emergency.
So, okay.
Anyway, so that's the grant and they're looking for ideas on how to improve winter tourism. That's the idea. And those are the ideas they came up with and, and obviously, we'd love to hear more.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Any other correspondence? If, if you have received letters that Lonnie was not included on, like I said before, please do forward them on to Lonnie so they can be part of the packet. Did anybody else receive any other correspondence?
I didn't.
Do we need to, um, do anything about Brent Moore resigning from Bear Tooth RCND?
No.
That's nothing for us to do?
No.
Okay.
The mayor will appoint someone, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we will now open it up for public comment again. So I'll first open it up into the room, please, if anyone would like to step forward and speak.
So I, I, it sounds like there, there's, you know, quite a process, but, um, I would hope that part of that process, and I think I heard something about it, but that you would do a neighborhood impact, yeah, survey, you know, of how, you know, this project would affect all of us that live on Hauser and the neighborhoods around and, you know, the added congestion and traffic and all of that. So that would be my hope that that happened.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Oh, no, you go.
Come on, you guys.
Don't be shy.
Hope Smith, five seventeen North Hauser in Red Lodge. Um, I know that we can fill out the survey. And I know we can send to the specific Red Lodge Area Community Foundation email. My concern, and it was brought up by Becky Larson, is that the steering committee that applied for this grant and is working on it has a lot of special interests. And they seem to be the ones who are going to benefit from this. If you look at the makeup of it, there are quite a few members that are involved with ICE. There are quite a few members that are involved with the community foundation. And those are some of the ones that, um, the things that they're talking about doing, um, they're the ones that are getting that. Other organizations in town weren't even given the opportunity to say, "What about this?" Um, such as the Historic Society, um, the third floor there, which could be used for events, not only in the winter, but year-round. Um, Roman Theater is a five oh one C three. They could use the money for other things too. So, um, I don't mind sending my emails to the steering committee or to filling out the survey. But I'm just concerned that it won't mean as much when you've got this particular group of people who are going to benefit from it for their things. Um, and lastly, as a grandmother of two young babies, not babies and toddlers now, we use that green space so much. And we go from that playground at Moose Tracks, we go through the big playground, we roll down the hill, they run up and down, and then we go over to Field Park to that one. And, um, it's nice that they're all within walking distance for, um, both the Boys and Girls Club, who comes over and uses it, and the Children's Center. And yes, I know we're gonna get green space over there where Milk Bastion's Place was. That's a long way away from where most children are in schools and, um, Mount Bluebells comes over and uses it. So, um, yes, we'll have some more green space there. But this is right in the center of town, and I see it getting used so much. And I'd like to see it stay green. Thanks.
Thanks, Hope. Next?
Hi, I'm Beck. Um, first off, I just would like to touch on the school resource officer position for a moment here. Um, while I did grow up in Red Lodge and enjoyed the Boys and Girls Club here in the many parks, I was, um, educated in South Florida, for better or for worse. Um, but I will say that, um, we had school resource officers in my community growing up. And that one of, um, my coaches in high school was Chris Hickson, who was shot and killed in the Parkland shooting because of the failure of a school resource officer. So, when you bring them in, please make sure that they're very good, because it came down to him to save countless lives. So, um, back to the Coal Miner sledding park hill concern that I have as the Historic Preservation Officer for Cartman County. I have concerns over the location for the sledding hill project in Coal Miner's Park with its proximity to one of Red Lodge's beloved treasures, the Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary. This longstanding sanctuary has been around for over forty years and has helped innumerable species of wildlife, as well as provided volunteer opportunities for our youth. I was one of those children. Winter is a stressful time for any animal. And introducing more stress in the form of noise and traffic so close to their habitat of respite will directly impact their ability to rest during the winter months and their overall health. There is also the added impact of additional light pollution should this project expand into a venture that operates during nighttime negatively affecting these already vulnerable animals. I am in favor of a sledding hill in a different location, perhaps on the north end of town, towards the golf course and Sam's Tap Room. This would be an ideal area since it has already been developed and experiences through traffic. I'm not in favor of any venture that will bring additional bright lighting into our breathtaking dark Montana skies. Dark skies are a huge aspect of Montana's appeal as we experienced just the last couple of weeks ago with the fabulous displays from the Northern Lights. Once we begin down the path of light pollution, it will become increasingly more difficult to put the genie back into the bottle. And I urge those involved with this project to consider what that will mean for future generations of Cartman County nights.
Any other? Next?
I'm reading this mail. It couldn't be here. Deborah Schefner, Red Lodge. There are other places, uh, no, sorry.
Who's this letter from?
Uh, Zachary Clardy.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're good. Um, "To the Red Lodge City Council, there are other places that could use the money more. I don't know if the money is allowed to be used anywhere else. But a good way to do this, but on a smaller scale, is to redo the gazebo and make it more of a central area. Adding a real sound system and maybe a backdrop so bands can sound louder. And the noise could be targeted towards Main Street and not the houses." "The field part of the park is also used for soccer practices and many other activities. We don't wanna take away from the kids. There already isn't much to do around town. The idea of making it nicer is great, but a concrete pad is not very nice. I'm sure the chips at Moose Trails could be replaced. Lots of repairs needed there. There are four hoops at the basketball courts that need to be replaced. I'm sure the baseball field could use some spitting up. There are lots of other comments about low-income housing. This would be the best place to use money. Not building at Lyons Park specifically, but putting that money towards a ban on Airbnbs or the amount that is allowed in is certain amount of space. Not sure about that. This would open up lots of housing. All just ideas. Biggest part of town is the people. Lots of Red Lodge is low-income and local. These are people. These are the people we need to support. The kids also deserve a fun summer and winter. There are also many things we could do to help the- help the town. I say we let the town create ideas and do a voting on which one- on which one people like the best. This is fair and would have immense input on what people think the town needs." Zachary Clardy.
Thank you. You can go ahead and give those to Lonnie so they can be part of the record. I should've told you that earlier.
Here's the other one she-
Thank you. Okay. Um, any other public comments? You can speak twice if you-
There are things I have to say, so I can go sleep tonight. Um, Becky, four fifteen North Hauser. Um, my first part was very emotional, and I'm sorry. It just means a lot to me. But as there are questions, I do know that this is a grant. I do know that grants have a closing date. So, um, as much as we know that we want to say we're gonna give this time, and we're gonna work on it, and we're gonna be careful about it, we also know that all grants have closing times. And so, there- things will be rushed and moved and pushed along. And I hope that all of you remember that when you're thinking about what you guys need to talk to us about. Um, I think there's lots of questions here. Who's gonna maintain this place after the grant is gone? Who is going to, um, who's gonna, uh, I'm sorry. We already have an open containers issue in that park during hockey games. So, if these get bigger, bolder, um, we're gonna have more problems with that. Um, there's also-
There is still open container law in the park. You can drink in the park.
No, you cannot.
No, you-
Yes, you can.
I just read that ordinance. You cannot drink in a city park or alley.
Unless you- unless you have special permission. You have to have a permit in a park to- in order to drink in a park.
I guess I'll have to read that.
Yes. I mean, you can- there are- there is- there is special compensation. I know that the Art Guild has their, you know, has their stuff. But in or- but just to sit here and slam down a few, there- I do not believe you can do that.
No, you can't.
So, that is something that we need to look into. There's also some fire issues, being the open pits that are constantly, um, built every single night. Again, I don't have a problem with the- with the ice skating. It is just the simple fact that what we wanna do to that park is far, it's hard. And when you come down to it, this is going to end up to be a commercial venture, because it's so big and so bold, and there's gonna be so much added to it for a budget that it's gonna have to become a commercial, um, venture for this town. You're gonna have to start charging people to use this space if you wanted to come pay for this ice skating rink anymore, to upkeep on that cement, to upkeep on that refrigeration, to upkeep on those lights that you guys are looking at. This is going to become a commercial event. And what does that look like? What is the city going to do as this commercial event happens? Or does this come back on the taxpayers? And are we gonna pay for this as it goes through? These are just a lot of big questions, which I'm hoping are being answered at these meetings. Wish I could be there on the eighth, but I'm sorry. I'm going on a cruise.
All right.
So, I'll send someone else along. But, um, just a lot of things that we need to think about, because this becomes a big thing. Parking is truly a big thing, because I know on Facebook, I read someone say, "Oh, and it's great for parking." It's not great for parking. I mean, those of us that sit there, we're okay right now that we have this small farmer's market. And we're okay that we have this small little ice skating rink and that we have people parking in front of our residents. But when I come home after grocery shopping in the day and I don't have any place to park in front of my house, that is not great parking for an ice skating rink of this size. And the simple fact that if it becomes this size and you're bringing in more people to do more ice skating and more hockey playing, um, you're gonna have to look at a parking lot. And where are you gonna park? Where are you gonna build that parking lot? Or are you gonna use IG? Or are you gonna use the bank? And that's me being dong-bat. Just a lot of things to think about that literally keep me awake. I hope it keeps you awake too.
Thank you.
South Stacker, six oh one, South White. I'm just gonna piggyback off her comments. Um, from the bank standpoint, as a representative for the Bank of Red Lodge, we do not want parking for, um, Red Lodge ice in the bank parking lot any longer. So, that should not be up to us to police. Um, we will police it if we need to. Um, and we're figuring out what we need to do from a private parking lot standpoint.
You're gonna need signs that-
Okay, yeah, and we do have some. But we'll, yeah, we'll get- we'll get that handled. Um, to your point as well, as far as the Red Lodge ice group, um, they don't do themselves any favors. I'm friends with a lot of those guys. Um, but as you know, they trashed the park. They did not pick up any of their stuff after last winter. Pallets, uh, barbecue pits, fire pits, uh, wood.
I've got pickers. Everybody can see it. Okay, sorry.
You know, it seems to me like that's a very simple, basic kindergarten thing to do is to pick up after yourself. And to give them the ability to build a concrete slab and to give them access to the entire park, that would be negligent on all of our part. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any more? Yeah? Mr. Smith.
Ace Smith, five seventeen North Hauser. One last concern about the new hockey rink. It becomes kind of a permanent structure, and it takes away some of the twelve-month year-round use of that area. There's a lot of things you cannot do on a concrete slab in the summertime, uh, which gets done now. Um, I see it as, it, yeah, it could be used for six months possibly as an ice rink. But what do we do for the other six months with that land that's used for many other purposes? Some of which have been mentioned already. Uh, there- there's been talk of it possibly being a splash park. We have a splash park now as our- our public pool. I think it, having the, uh, permanent concrete rink restricts the use of the- of the ground year-round. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak again? Sorry, I don't think you- I don't- you didn't use your whole three minutes. So, you didn't use your whole three minutes.
Okay, so, just really quick. I- what is the- what is the sound or noise ordinance for this town?
Um, we can't go back and forth, but it- you can-
Look it up online. Okay, because they- they're loud.
There's, um, there's an ordinance. There's an ordinance. I'll find it and send it to you.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. It's why my dog can't go outside after ten o'clock.
Okay, any- any other comments? Yes?
Do I have to come up?
Yes, yes. Well, did you already use your three minutes? Because then you-
No, I did the last time. I have time left over.
Okay.
But you have to come up. Yeah, we can get it recorded.
Okay, so, I will say that when we had to do the Festival of Nations, we had to pay a hundred dollar extra to have the liquor in the park.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? Okay. Any other comments online? Please mute yourself or-
Yes.
BR?
Okay, yes, please. BR.
Um, BR Walker, uh, from Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary, and I live in Red Lodge. Um, I'm missing several things here. It's been a very interesting discussion. I feel like I've been in, um, the TV show Shark Tank. Um, I'm not seeing a strategic plan for what are the priorities for Red Lodge. I'm not seeing a business plan that shows how this will bring back money and be manageable for Red Lodge. I'm not seeing a marketing plan that shows how we would make it come to life. There's no pro forma. Um, there's still so much homework to do. I'm glad to hear it's not in stone. I'm glad to hear that people were willing to speak up about things. Um, I have to speak for thirty-four animals who can't speak for themselves. I also have to speak for the children that play on the hill. They were sledding today. Um, there's a freedom in what they're doing that if we don't plan it right, you would be taking that away. There are so many issues to consider. I think everybody is best if they make a tick list of what needs to be considered and it gets compiled. Um, I personally have asked to be on the steering committee because we haven't been consulted. Um, I think finding where you can get your input is probably, um, the best thing to come from this city council meeting is where can you communicate the strong points and get them heard and included in planning? Um, people are listening. It's just that it was a shocking meeting last week, because things were somewhat of a surprise to hear, um, sketchy details of big ideas. Um, I think we need to be patient with each other and do what Red Lodge does, and that is pull together. Uh, I'm in to do that. I hope you are too.
Anyone else online that would like to speak?
I'd like to say one more thing, if I may. Sorry, I'm sitting at dinner with my apron.
Yes.
Let me get back to you guys. I can't.
We can see you.
Okay, okay. So, I- I'm really glad that I attended this meeting. I'm really glad I attended the meeting last week. And I just wanna give kudos to our city council. Watching you guys, or you gals, work together was really heartwarming as a- as a citizen here. Seriously, seriously, knowing that- that you guys have our backs really means a lot. And I, um, I appreciate that. You have a very well-run meeting. Um, as a board member, I know how hard that can be. So, with that being said, I'm gonna reiterate everything that I said about the Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary and the dangers that would occur. Um, I'm gonna repeat that. And, um, I'd also like to make a comment about the Lyons Park project. Um, my biggest fear is, so, you know, the- the concrete slab goes in, and then they decide, "Oh, well, we need to have a- a building here. We need an outbuilding here. Oh, well, we need to have more restrooms. We need more concrete here. Oh, well, we need to have a concession stand. We need more concrete here." And then pretty soon, it's a parking lot. And it's not like somebody's gonna go, say, one day, twenty years down the road, "This was a bad idea. Um, we should dig up the concrete and plant grass again." That's not gonna happen. And so, that's a fear, and I fear for my neighbors that live in the surrounding areas around the park. Thank you for letting me be such a spaz. Put that in the record too.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else online that would make a comment? Anyone? Okay, last chance for public comments for tonight. Anyone? Okay.
With that, uh- I still can't say anything, right? It's hard for me to separate Ann Rude and Ann Rude City Council. But I'll- I'll be Ann Rude City Council.
Okay. You are allowed to speak.
Yeah.
You're allowed to breathe. You can't breathe.
Yes, please. You can't have conversations with the public. You can now speak.
You can talk to Jody, but not them.
You can talk to the rest of the council right now.
Right here, right here.
And we would love to hear what you have to say.
I have a lot to say, and I've been up a lot with Becky, uh, reading and thinking. And, um, I can't- there's not time enough for me to say what I want to say. But I will just say in a nutshell that people will always trump tourism. And that is my heart. That's why I ran. Um, you know, tourist- if tourism has a problem, that's their own problem. But I'm here for the people. I'm here for the neighborhoods. And that is going to be the- my wife's blood for the next year. And I don't know if I'm gonna run again, but, um, but I just want everyone to know people have- are in my heart not tourism. And some made-up stuff, made-up tourism. But anyway, that's all. I'm- I'm- I could talk for an hour.
Okay, anyone else have any comments?
Well, and I agree with you, but this town dies without tourism. So, we have to strike a balance between the people and- and the tourists, because we are a tourist town. And our restaurants and our businesses rely on tourism, because we can't support them ourselves. So, we rely on tourism. So, there has to be a balance, and that's what we're going for, is a balance between keeping our town not boarded up because tourism's gone, but the people are happy. Oh, wait, not the market's gone, the pharmacist is gone. Everything that we have here for our own enjoyment is based on tourism dollars.
You don't go into a neighborhood-
Sad but true.
Ann Rude.
So, it's always got to be a balance. And- and that's where- that's where, when I look at these things, I look at them as a balance.
But you- you don't go into a neighborhood and ravage a park in a neighborhood just because, you know, you- you don't get what you want. You- you have what you want. We all agree this park is great. We all agree this park is great, we love the skating. I walk my dog at night, I walk by the park, it just brings me joy to see that park, that rink. But you're ravaging an historic area, and that is not right.
All right. Any, any other comments at the table? Okay. All right, go better. Okay.
I'm going to return.
Yes.
Good job, Jody.
Good job, Jody.
Thank you.
Excellent.